So I guess we will call the meeting to order. It's 7:09, sorry to keep you waiting. Thank you for your patience. We've got lots of work to do these days. So I guess I'll start by seeing if there are any items to be added to the agenda from councilors. I have one, but I'll check with others first. No, so hearing none, I'll request to add a discussion on the Fire Services Steering Committee to the council agenda this evening. I'd be looking for unanimous consent from councilors for that. If I could raise your hand, thank you. Okay, so thank you very much. We'll move on then and do a review of the minutes. Yes, sorry, sorry. Yes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Go ahead.
I'm going to approve the amended agenda.
Great, thank you. Is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Deputy Warden, any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carried. Now we will review the minutes from last year. December 7th, Committee of the Whole. I assume everyone's had a chance to review those minutes. And are there any errors or omissions you would like to identify? So if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December 7th Committee of the Whole meeting.
Thank you. Is there a seconder on that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. So any further discussion? All those in favor? Please raise your hand. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on then to the funnest part of our meeting is the presentations. So welcome to Trevor Boudreaux and Maggie McDonald from Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health. We're really pleased to have you here. So the floor is yours if you'd like to get started. You'll just need to press the little red button there on your mic. Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for having us. So I'm Maggie.
Hi, I'm Trevor.
And we're just going to present to you what we've been up to with our committee and our plans for the future. So with the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health Committee. So this committee was formed a year ago, so winter of 2020. The Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health is a community-led organization that serves the Cape Breton South region. So we cover the town of Port Hoxbury and all of Richmond County. So we're a group focused on the recruitment and retention of healthcare professionals and better access to healthcare services for our community members. So we have some community representatives, part of our committee. So we have representatives from the town of Port Hoxbury, municipality of Richmond County, the Straight Richmond Hospital, the Dr. Kingston Clinic, the St. Anne's Community Center, Straight Aerie Chamber of Commerce, sorry, the Cape Breton Partnership, the Continuing Care Nova Scotia, the Island Gateway Medical Clinic, the Airichat Medical Clinic, Richmond Villa, and other healthcare professionals in our area. So before I get started in what my role is, I have included a quote from Victoria McCauley. So she's our recruitment consultant for the Eastern Zone. So she says, "A community navigator is an important asset to Nova Scotia Health's physician recruitment consultants. Navigator can act as a local expert and help connect physicians and their families to the resources and networks within a community." So some of my role includes building and maintaining a professional website and social media presence, continuing to update these as required. Networking is a huge part of my role, so building relationships with local community members and groups to better work together to promote our region and connect with local healthcare professionals and contacts made through our community group. We also do a lot of presentations, so presenting at healthcare recruitment job fairs provincially and abroad, providing information sessions to local healthcare programs such as Dalhousie Family Med programs, RNs, LPNs, CCAs. So what are the benefits of access to healthcare? So with an aging population in Cape Breton South, it's critical that residents here have the access to the healthcare services that they require. Access to high-quality healthcare services is important for maintaining overall health, preventing and managing disease, and achieving overall mental and physical wellness. A community that offers an abundance of healthcare services attracts more families and businesses, improving the overall economic growth. So some of the things we've done so far as a group, we've participated in organized community events, participated in the Dalh family online conference and job fairs to promote our region. We've built and maintained professional working relationships with Nova Scotia Health, other navigators across the province, and the local Straight Richmond Hospital Foundation Board and many others. So we've hosted and supported local physicians to the area and other various healthcare professionals. And we've also welcomed new professionals this past winter. So what's next for us? We hope to continue to work with the community and healthcare facilities to better understand the barriers we face and how we can overcome them together, participate in future healthcare careers and fairs and conferences, sorry, online and in person, continuously develop and maintain our online presence, and create and present various information centers to upcoming healthcare programs, and to always welcome and help retain healthcare professionals to the area. So you can follow us on some social media just by searching Cape Breton Recruiting. We should come up. But I'll open it up for any questions or Trevor, if you want to add anything I missed.
Am I on here? Thank you. Thank you, Maggie. And we're really pleased to have Maggie with us. So this all started, I'll do the history lesson like some councilors used to do in Port Hoxbury. The, you know, the history of this came about, actually, it was a former warden here that actually had chatted with me about November of 2019 and just said, you know, you know, Sherry Sampson at the Lordways Clinic is really looking for. He'd realized that as Port Hoxbury was making some initiatives to look at physician recruitment stuff, but he said there was a bit of a struggle there at the clinic. And Sherry took it by the horns and kind of invited people from all walks of life, so from the chamber, from both municipalities. And we sat and talked about, you know, the crises or the concerns that we have here. And the original concern was mostly to do with physician missing in act. Well, physicians being available across our area. So two in Port Hoxbury, two in Lordways, and one at the straight. But we came to Zoom realize the importance of recruiting and retaining and attracting all sorts of different healthcare providers in the community. And so our mandate became more than just physicians. And it's been a lot of hard work to get to where we were. And certainly, there was a lot of people doing this part-time on the side of their desk. And to be able to have someone like Maggie here to do this full-time for us is very important. It's important to get to where we want to go, to get to those objectives and make sure that we're supporting the community healthcare workers we have now as well as attracting the ones we need to support our communities and to grow. And really pleased with where we've come. One year is a short time to get to where we are. And I think it was, it'll be a year next week that we actually sat down and met. So Amanda was at that first meeting. And some of you have been able to come on to our Zoom meetings. And we encourage you all to attend when you can. Certainly, we try to meet fairly regularly on Thursdays is what seems to work. But there's a lot on the go, and Maggie kind of touched on a bit of it. But our website is newly released and still a work in progress, but we're very excited about it. And we're hoping to do some promotions on social media as she said, you can follow us. But to keep up to speed with what we're doing, that'll be important for us and to promote what it is that we're doing. And we've had some successes. We've, you know, we've been able to, you know, bring healthcare providers to our community, give them tours. And we're hopeful that some of that comes to fruition very shortly. We hopefully have some good announcements coming. And but yeah, any questions that you guys have, we're willing to answer.
Thank you so much. So any questions from councilors? Deputy Warden?
I don't have a question as much as I have a statement. And personally, I'd like to thank Maggie for all the hard work. Again, I had the luxury of jumping on the last Zoom meeting. And you're right, there has been an awful lot of work completed in the last year. And I mean, usually, the first year is the hardest to get off the ground. So it's, yeah, great job.
Thank you. Yeah, you have a pretty great team to back me up and got this thing started, so it's good. Thank you.
And just on that, I do want to thank both the former council here who made the decision to help fund that, help fund our group, as well as the Town Council in Port Hoxbury, as well as some other funders that have stepped up and supported us. Because it's not free to have someone like Maggie. And so, yeah, no. And but it's been, it's very important. And for the continuity and for this to keep moving forward, you know, there will be some discussions about how we can keep this funding opportunity going and if there's an opportunity for us to continue to work together with the councils and with our community groups that help us, so.
Yeah, and for those especially who are kind of more new to the CB, what is it? SRH or SH, whichever it is. Can you just maybe speak a little bit to the impact that housing is having, particularly during COVID, on the attractment of professionals? Like when they're coming here for locums, when they're coming here for whatever the case may be? Is there any information you could share on that?
Yeah, Amanda, I'll speak to that. Housing is my number one challenge, definitely, in both areas. So the town of Port Hoxbury and Richmond. So what I'm finding, most healthcare professionals who I'm in contact with daily often want to be housed around the town of Port Hoxbury or close to Evanston, I guess, where the straight hospital is located. And yeah, housing is not, it's not easy to find. Here, it's very spread out in Richmond County, as you all know. Port Hoxbury, you can find it, but it's not, how do I say, up to par. You know, I wouldn't recommend it for, you know, healthcare professionals to come and be happy here. So you might want to add to that.
And certainly, you know, other parts of the province have recognized this as well. So an example is in Yarmouth. What has happened there is actually one of the credit unions in the community actually stepped up with some businesses and said, you know what? This is important. We will need to attract and retain physicians in our area. And so they've, you know, they've created a building where they have apartments and also a space for residents, for medical students, for people coming into work. And so that has been a very important part for them, and they recognize that early. And I think you're seeing this across the board. So, you know, these healthcare providers who are interested in potentially moving here don't necessarily have the luxury of just coming and taking a tour around always. So it's, they're looking for housing right away. I mean, we had a couple of nurses that were looking early on. And thank you to Amanda for helping us out finding some. But really, it comes down to, you know, we're scattered and we're, you know, I just sent, gave Maggie a heads up. I just got a message from someone else looking for housing. And so this is, you know, while I'm sitting here. So this is an ongoing issue and one that I think we all need to work on to address. And if it's just, it's not just for these professionals, obviously, this is something bigger.
Thanks, guys. Sorry for the hard question. I just, I really think it's important for us to bring that to light. And, you know, maybe there is some kind of connection we could make with the Straight Richmond Housing Coalition as well, you know, just, you know, in terms of understanding what the inventory of property is like out there. Are there any other comments or questions for Councilor Sampson?
And I guess I would also say in regards to housing, we have an audience that watch our meetings every week. So if you or someone you know has a property that you'd like to rent out to these healthcare professionals, please reach out to one of us or to Maggie at the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health, and she can probably hook you up.
Any other comments, questions? No? All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. It was really great to hear from you. Lots of, lots of work going on, I know, so appreciate it. Thank you. So our next presentation will welcome Alan Eddy from Port Hoxbury Paper. We're extremely happy to have you here with us this evening, Alan. Thank you. And when you're ready to speak, you'll just press the little button on your monitor there.
Thank you very much, Warden. It's a huge pleasure and an honor to be here this evening to talk about this with you. And I guess this is the first time I've been in the council chamber since the election. So congratulations to all the councilors on your election and to you as a council for looking here. As long as you have a good job, that's enough. We're very excited to work with this council. That's why I'm here, Warden.
I was just going to say, you know, those people that claim they can stop a watch, right? When it comes to tech, if something go wrong, it's going to go wrong around me. At any rate, again, thank you very much for the opportunity and a huge shout out to Yvonne for helping us with the logistics to get things organized and have the presentation ready for you this evening. I guess that first slide is just simply to remind you all that we do have a website, like most organizations, and there's a lot of good information there. If there's things about the company you're interested in, there's a lot of things that are worth doing there. We are also on social media. Facebook is referenced there, but we're also on Twitter. So ways to, we're looking to reach out to the communities and get our story out to you. I think when you see this first slide and you look at the bottom and strong community is probably as municipal leaders what you're most interested in. And as a company, we kind of see the recipe that gets us to those strong communities is it starts right at the base level, which is a diverse ecology. We, as a company, are very proud of the responsible forestry that we undertake to maintain that diverse ecology. And of course, we believe that that's the underpinnings of our business, which leads to the healthy economy. And if you can put those three things together, you're a long way down the road towards strong communities. The, that's actually on your screen is a quote, and I should have attributed it to Ron Stern, who, as you all know, is one of our owners. And I guess it's worth reading out for folks at home. "We are on a mission to make Port Hoxbury Paper the highest quality and most competitive producer of super-calibered paper in North America, while at the same time being a great place to work, environmentally responsible, and a strong contributor to the province of Nova Scotia." And so this evening, it gives me, you know, Trevor mentioned about a history lesson. And I guess to some degree, this is a history lesson because we're going to walk through the milestones of, we just celebrated our eighth, we're in our ninth year of operation now as Port Hoxbury Paper. And we wanted to, just before Christmas, we had sent this out to folks. And Amanda was very gracious and said it would be a good thing to come and talk to it directly to council. Very pleased to do that because we're very proud of what the company has contributed to this point and what we think is the future going forward. So I'm sure most of you in this room in 2012 were very attuned to what was going on at the mill and do it. I can share with you that at that time, I was employed with the government of Nova Scotia. And I lived through all three versions of the deal that finally came to be. I remember particularly being in the premier's office on an all-night session when the first time it got done. And then we all know that there were some challenges with that. And I remember very well waking up at about 6:30 on a Saturday morning, having been told the day before that that was it, the deal was done, and looking at my BlackBerry only to see a request for information. What's that all about? And so that began a very feverish day. And again, I know that culminated that evening with the announcement that the deal had been done and that Port Hoxbury Paper would be restarting. And the reason that was possible, I know from a lot of, both, you know, the owner's perspective and their interest in the company and also the government's support of it, was the state-of-the-art technology that that facility represents. That was what really had everybody's interest at the time, and that's been the key to making it. That and the strength of the people. And I think that's, you know, a tribute to Richmond County and to the surrounding counties in eastern Nova Scotia. It's the people that make that business. So in 2013, I know when the deal was signed, there were a lot of skeptics and people feeling, oh, well, this is just another one of these Nova Scotia stories. Somebody comes to town, convinces the government to put a lot of money on the table, and then they'll pack up and run just as soon as they, they'll take what they can and run. And of course, 2013, I think the company very quickly set about addressing those issues with the kinds of actions that you see there. $5 million to optimize the wood processing process, $400,000 in technology upgrades. Working on, at the time, which was a significant issue coming out of the natural resource strategy, was around clearcutting and modifying our forestry practices. All of that to begin to give confidence to the people of Nova Scotia and certainly eastern Nova Scotia that Port Hoxbury Paper was serious and was here to stay. In 2014, again, just a sign of the strength of the commitment of Stern Partners, capital investments in excess of $15 million. All of those significant in terms of generating employment in eastern Nova Scotia. And the other piece is, and I guess as municipal leaders, at the end of the day, this is a piece that interests most people in politics, and that's, well, what's the tax revenues? Because we know that, you know, much is, it's taxes and one other thing are an inevitability of life. It is what, it is what makes the, you know, so many things possible. And so in 2014, just two years after starting, we saw tax revenues of all types amount to $23 million annually, a very significant contribution. And economic studies at time estimated 1,000 full-time equivalent jobs in both the mill and woodlands, providing about $24 million in direct labor income. So there's that piece that accrues to the public purse, which is, of course, very important. But there's also that piece that drives the local economy in terms of direct funds that are being poured in through the labor income. One of the other, I said at the beginning, we're very proud of the responsible forestry practices our company has. And of course, the mill through previous owners, I think, has a longstanding reputation from its Scandinavian roots for the type of forestry that's been practiced, leading-edge stuff. And of course, part of the agreement with the province was that we would seek third-party certifications. And in 2015, we reached those certifications. And of course, one of the reasons that happened in 2015 and not 2013 is it takes time for those things. You have to, you have to have a bit of a track record for them to assess. And at that time, we had three separate certifications. For the forestry stewardship, and which was, which is probably more of a European standard, although here in North America, also SFI and the PFC chain of custody systems, all of which collectively give people some confidence. It's not just what Port Hoxbury Paper says, well, aren't we wonderful people? And we're doing a great job. These are, these are third-party experts whose job it is, they have no dog in the fight, if you will. Theirs is just to say, these are their standards, are they being met? And we have, since that time, successfully maintained all of those certifications. Another piece that I think that's very important is the focus on opportunities for employment and partnerships as well as research and innovation projects with local universities. I think, you know, probably in the last few years, you couldn't have a conversation in government without the word innovation being there somewhere. And if you did, it didn't last very long. It is, it is a key focus, continues to be. It means different things to different people. But one, again, I said early on that the success of the business is largely due to the quality of the people that come from this region and support us both directly in the business and as our supply chain. And of course, some of that is that innovative thinking and approach is that new solutions to old problems and new ways of doing things. Very important to any business to prosper in today's world. And of course, there's, as I said, there's lots of different kinds of innovation. There's business system innovation, there's technology innovation, there's product innovation, just to name three. And the company has been very active in all three of those. In fact, they basically redid the product line since it's been reopened. And we are now, we have two or three products that are unique in the marketplace. So what's next on that journey? We said we were looking to be a great place to work. Industrial safety is a huge focus for any successful operation. And of course, in 2016, we achieved 1,500 days of operating with no lost time accidents. And then, you know, for those of you that have been to the mill and have some concept of the size and complexity of that operation, that was a very, very significant achievement. The fact that employee absenteeism, sorry, first day of the new tongue, employee absenteeism below the national average, less than 2%. Again, I think that speaks to the fact that most people see it as a great place to work. Again, very conscious of our place in the province and here in Cape Breton and Unimahge. And having signed a five-year management agreement with the Confederacy of Mainland Mi'kmaq and then subsequently with the Unimahge Institute, a resource institute, were very important milestones, and we continue to work very closely with those relations. And again, did I mention taxes? 24, it continued to grow, and we're generating more than $24 million in annual tax revenue for the province and the people of Nova Scotia. 2017, five years, way past what a lot of people thought the thing was going to do. Continuing now to really look at how do we partner with our local universities to go beyond the core business, which is the paper business. And of course, many of you knew my predecessor, Mark Dubay, who worked very hard in this front. And I have done my best to sort of pick up the flag that Mark, the trails that Mark had blazed. And we continue to look at some significant opportunities to bring more employment and economic development to the area. COVID, like everyone else, it's put a bit of a freeze on some things. But we're quite hopeful that this year we'll see some exciting developments that we'll be able to share with you at the appropriate time. Again, something that we are quite proud of there is the fact that it wasn't, again, just us feeling good about ourselves, that obviously the story was getting out and other Nova Scotians were recognizing that PHP was an important contributor to both the straight area and the general provincial economy. And I guess that's part of the reason why we do want to celebrate is because we want, you know, continued success relies on the support of our communities and our partners. And so I think it's important that people hear what has happened and see the potential for what can happen. 2018, again, someone's talking about taxes on this slide. Actually, without being flippant, an important piece in 2018 is that if you do the math on those kinds of taxes and you realize that the provincial contribution, which was somewhere in the order of, depending on how you do the math. on how you do the math, you know, in 120 to 125 million dollars, was committed, at that point, 2018 would have all been paid back. And going forward, all those tax revenues now occur, you know, the, the investment has been repaid in, in, you know, six years, which is, which is pretty good return on investment in, in most areas. And from there forward, those taxes all accrue directly to the benefit of, of, of the communities, provincially and, and municipal, and to some extent, federal. I, I spoke earlier about innovation and, and new approaches to new things. This is a little bit of an inside baseball story. Who cares about craft pulp? The, again, for those of you who have been to the mill or have heard the stories, you know that one of the things that, that is referenced often is what a high production, high productivity mill that is. And, you know, basically, you have a sheet of paper that's almost 10, 10 meters wide. The actual path through the machine is, is almost 400 meters by the time it goes up and down through all the rolls. And it's doing that at a, basically 100 kilometers an hour. And, and that goes on almost 24/7, 365. So the strength of that is very important. And the strength comes from the fibers that come, the pulp fibers. And one of the things that most of the world that have a similar process to us, which is TMP or thermomechanical pulp, they always introduced a certain amount of craft pulp into that process. And the, and the reason for that craft pulp was to provide strength to the sheet, so that in fact, it could operate like that. The nature of craft pulp is such that compared to thermomechanical pulp, it takes twice as many trees to make the same amount of pulp. And the reason for that is, is that wood has sort of three fundamental components, water, obviously, like every, every living thing that, you know, when it comes to wood, and then it's cellulose and lignin. In the case of craft, what happens is they separate the cellulose and the lignin, and they only use the cellulose component, which is roughly 50% of the wood. So you can see why that takes twice as much. If you're using twice as much wood, stands the reason that it's a little bit more expensive, craft pulp is a little bit more expensive from a, from an input perspective. But it does have a significantly higher impact because it takes more trees to do. And so one of the things that the company was very focused on was reducing that amount of, of craft in our process, both because it was, it was a competitive advantage, you know, from a cost perspective, when you're in a very tough market, you have to do everything you can. But it also really has an impact on our, on our, on our footprint, environmental footprint. And so in 2019, we were successful in eliminating the craft pulp. And now our paper is made 100% of the pulp that is produced right there at the plant in Point Topper. And so that's both reduced our costs and reduced our environmental input. And we are virtually the only, that we're aware of, certainly the only ones in North America, and we believe the only ones in the world that have accomplished this feat. So when, when we talk about the quality of people and the innovation that's gone on at that mill, that, that's a, that's a classic example of it. In 2020, we became one of the top three Nova Scotia-based exporters, shipping through the port of Halifax. We've developed a flexible power arrangement. And, and again, all of you that have been close to the mill's story know that one of the key things about TMP pulp is that it takes a huge amount of power. It substitutes mechanical force for the chemical breakdown that's involved in, in a craft process, to the point that, you know, we are roughly 10% of the, of electric demand in, in Nova Scotia. So anything that can be done to, to adjust that, that either demand or the cost of that is a significant issue to the business. It also represented a tremendous opportunity to the utility, because as we moved to green power, when, one of the challenges with wind is how do you balance that on the grid? Because you can't store wind. So if you have something that you can use to change your demand up and down, it allows you to, to use more of that wind when it's available or to reduce the amount of coal that needs to be dispatched. And so last year, well, actually, I guess, yeah, just a year ago in January, the new rate was approved through the Utility and Review Board. It was, it's unique again in North America. And it provides benefits to the rate base in general, so to each of us as citizens of Nova Scotia, because virtually all of us use power from Nova Scotia Power, with the exception of a few smaller municipal utilities. It provides benefits to Nova Scotia Power itself and benefits to, to our company in terms of, of sharing, sharing the, the savings that are possible by being able to, to shift the load around by the utility. So again, another example of how important innovation is to the success of Port Hoxbury Paper at all levels, whether it's technology, whether it's, it's process, or whether it's business systems. And I guess the last bullet there is, is just again, is, while I was emphasizing the tax story there simply because, again, wanted the, the big buildup to the fact that, you know, it has been, we feel, a very good investment, both as a company and as a province. And we hope that you feel that as a municipality, that, that it's benefited you. But there you see at 1.4 billion, that's with a B, that's a pretty significant level of economic activity. That's, since the facility opened in 2012 as Port Hoxbury Paper, and that's not including the employee wages. So, you know, when, when we say that we believe we're a significant economic engine for eastern Nova Scotia, particularly the straight region, I think a figure like that lends, lends credence to, to, to that statement. So again, we're, we're, we're very pleased to have celebrated that eight years of success. And it says, and counting, because we certainly see, looking forward to, to the future. I guess the other thing that, that we saw just in, in 2020, bleeding into 2021, was, was once again, the opportunity to contribute to the straight regional hospital and, and to the community. You know, in, under previous, previous ownership, the employees at the mill were very pleased to be part of the, the funding drive that helped establish the hospital the first time around. And as a company, we were very, very pleased to be able to be part of it, once again, the, the most recent fundraising drive. And so with that, Warden, I'll conclude my comments. And if there's any questions, only too pleased to take them.
All right. Well, thank you very much. It's very informative. It's a great summary of the document that I had read this fall. So any questions from councillor, councillors? There's a little bit of feedback coming through the mic here. No questions? No? All right. Looks like you said it all. Well done. That's how you know you did a good job, right?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity here. And certainly, councillors, we know that, that, you know, we are omnipresent in the region in terms of our operations. And if there are any questions or concerns that come your way, please feel free to reach out. We, we pride ourselves in working with our host communities.
Well, thank you very much. And congratulations on the eight-year anniversary. I think it's great news. And I guess I would also extend our, our thanks for your, for taking the time to come here. But also, I would ask you to extend those thanks to Mr. Stern and his partners. And there's continued confidence and investment and innovation in the region. It's, it's wonderful, wonderful to see. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and will do.
Okay, thanks. All right. So, okay, we're going to move on to the next part of our agenda, which is, CAO has a couple of items added. So the first is regarding Nova Scotia transportation and infrastructure renewal regarding the road closure. So Dawn?
So a couple of meetings passed, there was an interest in, in requesting a road closure information from TIR. And we had staff look into it, and they requested some more information. And we did provide that. And as you can see in the correspondence that we included in the package, that TIR has sort of weighed in on the, on the request and indicated that the Remembrance Day events would not, would not meet the policy on road closure. So I don't know how we want to move forward from here. It's, it's policy on their part that they were not able to go forward with our request.
Any comments from councillors on that, in terms of a next step? Councillor Sampson?
No, for, for me, CEO, I'd just like to thank you and staff for looking into that for us. And, and I guess going forward, again, going, going back to the situation, it had to do with COVID, and of course, you know, not having too much traffic during that day. And I don't think there was any ill will when it came to, you know, the situations that did occur that day. So for me, going forward, I can just work with our local legion members and bring awareness to the situation, you know. So maybe just put up a few signs saying, Remembrance Day ceremony is taking place for the next 30 minutes or so. Put a sign in the ATV trail, you know, just to bring awareness to the ATV riders for that 30 minutes or so. So that's something I can, I can do on my own and work with the legion members. So again, thank you for looking into that, and we'll go forward from there.
Okay. Any other comments from councillors? Okay. Well, hearing none then, I'll move us to the next item on our agenda, which was virtual, virtual versus in-person committee of the whole and council meetings. Essentially, I think that piece is there just as an information item, using it as an opportunity to check in with councillors, because we need to make sure that we're keeping in mind the safety of our staff, our council, and also the constituents of the county as COVID continues to evolve. Fairly low cases right now. In the risk assessment today that I kind of put together, there's 48 counts, 48 counts of COVID since January, with just five in the eastern zone. So I guess I would ask councillors or staff if they would like to weigh in to add any additional information on that.
And it was, it was added to you just for, for information purposes, just to get your, you know, just to make you aware of it. And, you know, there, there are still municipalities across the province that are, that are meeting in person. And it's just, just to consider what's going on in our surroundings, and just to make you aware. And if you had any concerns or you wanted to discuss it further, that we could. So that's the reason why I put it on the agenda.
Any other comments? Councillor Sampson?
I think, I mean, I think we certainly need to keep our finger on the pulse of, of what is happening for sure. And I think perhaps it would be a good idea to reach out to tell, to see what kind of a lead time they would need to transition from an in-person meeting to a virtual meeting and still be able to make it accessible to residents, so that if we see that cases are climbing between, let's say, now and the next meeting, that we know we have X number of days to make a decision. So I'm not sure that I remember receiving that information, but perhaps, perhaps CAO Marshon, you could just reach out to them, just to get an idea of what lead time, sort of what our date to make a decision would need to be?
Okay. Great. Any other comments? Oh?
Yeah, you know, right now, personally, I prefer in-person, however. I mean, obviously, it could change quite quickly. We've seen that in a lot of places. But something I think you mentioned previously when we were talking about this, it would depend on staff and staff from Delil as well and so on and that. Just because I feel comfortable with it doesn't mean everybody else necessarily does. So I would hope anybody else, if they have concerns, feel free to bring it up if, if they're uncomfortable with meeting like this, because we just don't want anyone to feel pressured to do so.
Okay. Deputy Warden?
There you go. Last but not least, maybe. The, yeah, I, I agree with Brent or Councillor Sampson, I guess. The, I believe we have to be aware of the people around us is probably the most important. I, I get several calls, and one that I was actually going to bring up tonight about the resident in Richmond County, a residence, you know, entering our province. So I guess just awareness all around and then safety first. But again, I, I believe we have enough room and space in here that if everybody can remain comfortable, that we should have no reason to look to go virtual.
Okay. So we'll just continue to assess going forward. All right. So I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda. And it is, it's regarding the St. Peter's Village Commission quarterly meetings. So this suggestion came up as a result of a meeting that I attended with village commissioners on January 4. And that meeting was just for me. It was more informational learning for me, to get an update on activities and operations of the village and sort of their perspective on the interaction with the municipality. As we know, there's a, there's a strong partnership there. The village does operate sewer and water systems. And my understanding is that if they are looking for, for funding to conduct infrastructure projects, from time to time, they might apply to the county to access some of our gas tax funds. And they're interested, I guess, in also exploring opportunities for future development and collaboration. So they suggested that a quarterly meeting might be useful, at least certainly well, you know, as we're kind of still all fairly new councillors. But that quarterly meeting to include all councillors and commissioners and some maybe select staff from the municipality, as well as from the village commission, to bring us up to speed a little bit more, a little bit more on what the opportunities are for collaboration there and how we can make most efficient use of, use of taxpayer investment in, in both. So I guess I would, and I, as I understand, that these quarterly meetings did occur in the past, but hadn't occurred in some time. So I guess I'd look for some advice from councillors as to whether or not you think such a meeting would be a good idea, or if you have an alternate suggestion. Anyone want to chime in? Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I think we got to, honestly, it's time to reach, reach back out and make some connections, see if we can set up a meeting with the village commission and, you know, maybe see what's a good date for everybody and kind of get the ball rolling again, keep everybody in the loop.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments on that? Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, for sure. I agree with Deputy Warden, Dignan. I would have no problem meeting on a quarterly basis with the St. Peter's Village Commission. I think it's a good idea myself.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Perhaps we could get some, I don't recall ever having any meetings with the St. Peter's Village Commission quarterly. So perhaps we'd probably need to get some advice from our, our legal people to see if it's possible that we could actually do that. And because outside of the council table here, there may be some implication there that, that we may not be able to do that or discuss any, any, anything that would involve any type of request. So it may be in our best interest to pursue some legal, some legal advice on that.
Okay. Councillor's thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's fair. If that's what the CAO feels is appropriate, then I think we should, let's, let's ask the question. I think in principle, we're open to the idea of meeting quarterly, what the agenda perhaps looks like. We, we may need to have conversation about, and we'll, we'll take the lead from the solicitor and see what happens. So do, do we want to motion to instruct staff to consult with our solicitor on that?
Sure. Yeah, because that's going to have a financial implication. I think that's, that's in order. So.
Okay. So if you want to leave my microphone on, okay. So I would move to instruct CAO Marshon to contact the solicitor in regards to the nature and timing, let's say, of meetings with the St. Peter's Village Commission. Does that sound about right? Yeah, if you figure it out, whatever.
Yeah. Okay. So can we have a second there on that motion?
Ask him what you want to ask. Go. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. So any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay. So next on our agenda is correspondence regarding the Dr. Kingston Memorial Health Centre, related to a vibrant communities fund food security project that they are applying for funding for. And it's a request for a letter of support. So I'll assume that everyone has had an opportunity to review the letter requesting support. It looks to me that, based on the correspondence, they're looking for support in a variety of ways. They're looking for some, I guess, support from the recreation department in maybe sort of jointly advertising and recruiting for specific education sessions. They were seeking, I believe, a contact person, designating a councillor as a lead contact person for the proposal to ensure just strong communication. person for the proposal to ensure just strong communications with council on an ongoing basis, and to taking a leadership role in the establishment of sort of a food security coalition or food and/or food bank alliance type of activity. So is there any thoughts from councillors or concerns or from the CAO if you'd like to express any questions or comments on that? No? Okay. So I guess I would entertain a motion to support, to provide a letter of support based on those three components to the Dr. Kingston Memorial Health Centre for this project.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Could I have a second?
I would move that.
Thank you very much.
Second it, sorry.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
So just in reading over this, I just want to make sure I got this right. So one is they're looking at taking leadership role in the establishment of food security coalition and food bank alliance. And two, designating a councillor as a lead contact person. So are they looking for two councillors, one to take the lead and then one as also a contact person? Or are they just looking for one?
No, my understanding from Dorothy is that they're looking for a councillor, one councillor essentially, just to act as a lead contact that they could reach out to when they wanted to, you know, run things by council from time to time. And I did, you know, I did offer to her that I wouldn't mind fulfilling that role. I have been to date. I think in terms of taking a leadership role in the establishment of food security coalition, food bank alliance type of thing, they're more or less looking for the influence of council to, you know, to essentially try to bring these groups together. Maybe it's in terms of space or use of the Zoom application or some, you know, support from Laurier to assist us in moving these forward. I did discuss that with Laurier prior to this meeting, and he didn't seem to have a, there didn't seem to be any issue with that. So it seemed to be okay in his eyes, so.
That's great, because I was going to nominate you so long. It's perfect.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. So all those in favor providing a letter of support, please raise your hand. And all those opposed, motion carried. Thank you so much. All right. So next on our agenda is the review of checks issued December 2020. And that list was sent out to council prior to this evening's meeting. So were there any questions, specific questions from council on that item? Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, for me, there was just one, and it's a numbered company, CAO. So just wondering if you knew what that numbered company was. It's company number 3285522, Nova Scotia Limited, for an amount of $1,270.29.
Yeah, I'll have to check that. So just give an email to me tomorrow, and I'll look into that and respond.
Thank you.
Okay. That's great. That's great. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to move us on to the next item, which is items added to the agenda. And there was one specifically, and it was related to the Fire Services Steering Committee. So councillors, I've added that to the agenda because I've had some conversations in my local community with the fire chief there. And he was seeking, I guess, a restart to these committee meetings, and we hadn't really had one scheduled. He felt specifically that they were great for information exchange, sharing of best practices. Through that committee, I believe, and CAO could correct me if I'm wrong on this, but they had also been able to acquire the insurance for equipment and buildings as a group buy. It was through that committee, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, I guess he's wondering, are there other things that we could be doing within that committee as well? So I don't know, maybe I'll ask the CAO, are there other functions or participation of the emergency management coordinator that that committee was responsible for?
Well, as far as that committee was concerned, it was created a number of years back and included in the recent review that the consultants completed, it included dissolving that committee and creating a new committee of fire chiefs and the emergency services coordinator. And I don't believe there were any councillors on that committee based on their recommendation. However, this committee here appears to have a few councillors on there, and they have made some progress. However, at times, it, conversations got bogged down. So I guess that was one of the reasons why the consultants had created a recommendation to provide this new committee. And that's where we were at, I believe, at the last, one of the last meetings that we discussed regarding the fire services. So we could either continue in that direction or create that new committee with the fire It's essentially up to you folks. And if you wanted to modify and include councillors on there, you're more than welcome to do that as well. So I guess that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Don.
I wonder would it make sense maybe to, even I know Deputy Warden, Dignan, myself, I think, were appointed.
That's correct.
To at least have one meeting to discuss with the other people on it now about this recommendation of dissolving it and changing it to get their thoughts on it as well before taking any concrete action?
Sure, I think that might be, you know, a valuable option.
Any other comments? All right. So maybe we could ask for some staff support to organize a meeting in the near term, just work with your calendars, I guess. Probably for that first one, I would also want to attend, just as an observer, to kind of listen in. But maybe I'll just leave it with staff to referee. Great. So we can look back at what was originally scheduled. I think what Yvonne is saying, Wednesday nights, so. Deputy Warden? Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
There we go.
I'm trying.
I was just going to say the same thing. Maybe we can just jump on one of the meetings that's already scheduled and.
Yeah, they haven't been meeting, so.
They haven't been meeting at all?
Yeah. 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 So I think if Yvonne could work with scheduling something, then that would be great. Okay?
Sooner than later.
Yeah.
Not to rush you, Yvonne, but sooner than later, like really, we want to, either we dissolve it and move on to a new system, or we, yeah, meet them and find out what they want to do.
Okay. All right. So thank you very much, councillors. I guess if there's no further discussion on that, I'll offer one last time. All right. If there's no further discussion, then we will move into question period. So I'll invite members of the gallery to ask any questions you may have. Quiet group this evening, all right? Okay, so that being said, I'll accept a motion to move to our in-camera session. Councillor Sampson?
Make a motion to move to in-camera.
Thank you. Could I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. So we'll move to in-camera. In just a few months, we'll take a short recess first, though. Thank you.